Motion, Dr. Meyer, to return to open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. And Ms. Palmer, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item seven on our agenda night public hearing, we have none. On to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
On the consent agenda this evening are the following. The minutes of the July 17th regular meeting, donations which are usual customary, approval of bus service on private roads for the following home and associations and daycare providers: Carriage Hill, Children of America, Estates of Chancellaville, Font Lake, Lake Wilderness, Mount Hope Baptist Church, North Club, and Old Greenwich. Also, approval of the grant application for Head Start, one-time supplemental funding, which if approved will fund the purchase of up to two school buses for use by the SCPS Head Start program. Staff asks that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Mr. Brazwell makes a motion to approve the consent agenda, and a second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Please note the information items listed, including Head Start, field trip summary, school board policy, update on previously approved easement, and the school board committee assignments, which there are some changes, so please look at them to reflect our new member. And also items for the September 11th board meeting. And we are on to the item 10, the instructional highlight, we have none this evening. And now we are to number 11, recognitions and awards. Google for Education Certified Innovator Program Selectees. Mrs. Flannard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. We are pleased to share that two of our ITRTs, Erin West and Todd DeSando, were selected to participate in the Google for Education Certified Innovator Program Innovation Academy that was held at Google in Washington DC, August 2nd through August 4th. There were only 36 participants selected for the program from around the world on their professional experience, their passion for teaching and learning, their innovation in regards to technology in school settings, and their potential impact on other educators. Erin and Todd will be two of only 11 Google Certified Innovators in the entire state of Virginia. There are only 400 educators in the entire world that hold this title, and two of them are before you this evening. Congratulations to Erin and Todd.
And we'll move on to item 12, public comments. Dr. Meyer.
The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker's allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain love of decorum and mutual respect for one another. At this time, Madam Chair, we do not have anyone that's signed up to speak.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to item 13, special reports. 13.01, board committee reports. Does anybody have a board committee report? Mr. Blaine.
Just briefly, I'd like to say a word or two about our Career and Tech Center. The Cortland Chancellor Riverbend ROTC Battalion, based here at SCTC, is a leadership camp this week. And I'd like to recognize this activity. New cadets are being prepared for our leadership roles and team activities prior to the start of the school year. And they claim, and I agree, that the camp is a highlight for Level 1 9th graders. I'd also like to make a report about the Governor's School, if I may. We have two centers for the Commonwealth Governor's School. And the Spotsylvania site this year has 29 new students, and serves Spotsylvania, Massaponix, and Cortland High School. Riverbend High School, which serves Riverbend and Chancellor, has 30 upcoming 9th graders. They've been active already for the summer. The freshman students went to their first student orientation day at their site a couple of weeks ago, and parents came in to participate toward the end of the day, and they learned about the GCS technology that the students will use, and they also had an opportunity to get suggestions from the teachers, the faculty that was there, on helping these young people transfer into a brand-new experience at high school. We now have CGS, by the way, just for general information, has a total of 593 students altogether, and are drawn from four school divisions. Caroline County Public Schools, which is the most recent addition, has 22 students total this year. King George, with one site, has 81 students. Spotsylvania has two sites, we have 224 students total. And Stafford, with three sites, has 276 students, or 66, I'm sorry. They've made a very definite effort to transition the upcoming students into this new experience. And CGS is a rather challenging educational experience for a lot of students. And last Wednesday, 177 freshmen from throughout the Governor's School went to their second day of orientation at Stanford High School, when the parents came in about 6:00 and heard an overview of the total four-year instructional program covering math, English, science, history, and social studies by the faculty who were going to make the presentations. And I'm very much impressed, frankly, with the activities that they've undertaken, and I've met a number of the parents who are absolutely excited about it. And I've met a lot of students who, on one hand, are excited, and on the other hand, they're kind of apprehensive, too. So it's an interesting experience, so observe that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Shelley.
I just want a quick report from the Food Task Force. Just to let everyone know that our food sales, total meals, went up about 369,000 meals sold this past school year from the year before, and that our Food Services received an Award of Excellence. They received 100% on four third-party safety audits conducted by Echo Shore. All 30 of our schools had 100% pass rate for all Virginia health inspections, and they were also determined compliant with the VDOE USDA federal program administrative review. So I just want to mention that our Food Services is doing well, and I just want the public to know that. Thanks.
Dr. Meyer.
Just a quick announcement. While we've been on kind of a break for the summer, I was contacted by VSBA and asked to be part of a VSBA committee for the Task Force on Workforce Readiness, and even had a teleconference, virtual meeting, last Thursday. And it's going to be interesting working with that. I'll be also in contact with Dr. Baker and staff to receive kind of an update as to what we are doing, because I know, as Mr. Blaine works on the Career and Tech Center, it's all tied in. So I was asked to be part of that committee. I think it's an honor to be considered for that kind of committee in working with something on a statewide level. Thank you.
Any other reports? I just want to make a report on the School Board Advisory Committee, and that is that the first meeting is set for August 28th here at the School Board Office. The nominees have been made, and we, as a board, are looking forward to starting this committee to get more input and feedback from other stakeholders within the community. So we are excited to get that up and going and have our first organizational meeting, and that will be very fun and informative for us.
Madam Chair, I'd like to thank you for that announcement. I had planned to ask for some information. I think you've provided it this evening already, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Blaine. And the start time is at 6:00, I do believe. I don't have my invitation on me. Okay. And we'll go on to 13.02, Activity Bus Pilot Program. Mr. Wolf and Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, Kenny and I would like to go ahead and talk to you a little bit about activity buses and the pilot that are going to be taking place out at Post Oak and Spotsylvania High School. So if, with a computer, if I could draw your attention to the presentation up here, we're going to sort of split duty on this a little bit, but certainly if you have questions at the end for not just Mr. Forrest and myself, but Dr. Hester and Mr. Blake are here from Spotsylvania High School and Post Oak Middle School as well, if you have specific questions that might relate to their schools. So the start date of the Activity Bus Pilot for both schools is going to be day one.
Wow.
And it's pretty exciting, and we threw around the dates, and we talked about it a little bit, and they are ready for a go on September 5th. So I tried to convince them otherwise, but they didn't want that, and they certainly want to be able to do that. So we're really excited to start that for our students on that day. So who may ride the activity bus? From what you see there, activity buses are available for any Post Oak Middle School and Spotsylvania High School student who participates in an organized and supervised-sponsored activity that requires the student's attendance beyond the regular school day. Activities may include, but not limited to, instructional, remediation, tutoring, and/or extension or enrichment that is offered by the instructors or the teachers; student organization, meetings, and events that might be held, that someone needs to essentially have a club after school that they would like those students to participate in; and then, of course, your athletic participation. Students remaining after school, though, to watch an event must have their own transportation home. So trying to account for students who may stay after, well, number one, to watch an event, may overload our buses on the way home. So, because you will see in the next slide that there's only three activity buses. Now, these three activity buses will service both Post Oak and Spotsylvania High School. So you will have middle school students and high school students riding the buses together. This is different from when we had the activity buses from before, back 2007, '08, '09, where we had separate buses for those students. You will see from the departure time, Post Oak Middle School will be out and ready for their buses at 5:15. Those students will go ahead and load, and then those buses will transition up to Spotsylvania High School for 5:30. It is the responsibility of the student to be ready and waiting in the assigned pickup area for the designated departure time. Buses will not operate on early dismissal days, inclement weather days, or days on which after-school activities are canceled. And again, all of this information, well, I didn't really share it, but all of this information will be shared with the students and parents, and you'll see with the various outlets and how they're going to do that at the end of the slides. To assist with the supervision of our student riders, we will also have a bus attendant on each bus with the driver. You will notice that that is an adaptation, for those of you who have been in the county for a while, is that we didn't have a bus attendant before, it was just the bus driver, and then those students got on the bus, and that was it. So we felt to add the attendant, especially with middle school and high school riding together, that it would be beneficial for sort of the supervision aspect of that nature. So, then, the next slide.
Okay. In developing the activity bus routes, we looked at the attendance zone for Post Oak Middle School and Spotsia High School, and we wanted to try to identify properties that were either publicly owned or commercial properties that we could use as designated drop points for the activity route. We were looking for locations that afforded ample parking for parents that may be waiting for their students, and additionally, properties that had adequate lighting at the site. So, you know, when the time changes, it may be a little dark at the time that we're dropping off, so we wanted adequate lighting at those facilities as well. Additionally, we wanted locations that were on the right side of the road, preferably, so we didn't have students crossing the road to go to a pickup point. Some of the locations that we have identified, namely some of the schools are on the left side of the road, but there are situations where the bus can pull in, unload, and then pull back out. So again, we were looking at the safety aspect of it and trying to create situations where students weren't having to cross the road to go to their parents. We created the three activity bus routes with designated stops, and there are four stops each for the three activity runs. And the first activity run that's on the slide shows the bus making its first designated stop at Mine Road Baptist Church, then proceeding to Tuning Park, then to Belmont Firehouse Company 9, and then to Lake Anna State Park. And Activity Bus 2 would transition to 208 Variety Store, which is Shell Station on Courthouse Road, Livingston Elementary School, Long and Foster of Lake Anna, and then out to the Barnes Store. And then Activity Bus 3 would go up Courthouse Road to Courthouse Square, basically, and then go to Spotsia Middle School, then to John J. Wright, then to Berkeley Elementary School, and then Old Station Number 3 Fire and Rescue. So again, we've created designated drop points. The intent is that the parents would be there to receive the students once they depart from the bus.
Before we go to that slide, I wanted to draw your attention to the second bullet on this page, because we felt that it was important. Is that any student without a ride at their drop-off location, or has a concern about their safety, maybe they don't recognize the person who's going to go ahead and pick them up, or if there's some type of concern where they just don't feel comfortable as they get off that bus, they should notify that driver immediately so that they can get back on that bus and then be returned to their home school site. So we want to make sure that as this takes place, especially as daylight fades and it gets darker outside, we want to make sure that our kids are safe and that they feel comfortable with the ride that is there waiting for them. So if not, it's not as though the driver just drops off and takes off. We want to make sure that the students have been picked up accordingly and before they head on their route, but we want to make sure that if any student's not comfortable, that they come back. So the final slide is just basically, how's this information going to get out to the parents in the community? I have two very eager principals who have been asking, when can we let them know? When can we let them know? I said, you're going to have to wait until after the board presentation, because we want to make sure, in case there's any questions that come about, that we are prepared and you are prepared to go ahead and answer them. So you can see the various different types of communication that the principals will go ahead and employ, and that the division will use as well, to make sure that our parents and our students are well aware that, number one, activity buses start day one, September 5th out there, and then what are the parameters on how they can go ahead and use those. And I know that during the back-to-school events that the principals will be holding, that will be discussing this, and also as they have their meetings throughout the beginning of that first week, that they will be discussing with students in regards to who rides the bus and who has the opportunity to ride the bus, and how that works, and so on and so forth. It may be a little tricky at first, because you have tryouts, especially at the middle school level. High school is already into their, beginning their athletic season, but middle school tryouts begin day one when they come in, and it mainly because football has about 15 days to go ahead and practice before they can have their first game, they're mandated to do that. So, but we felt that starting on this day one would also provide those students who may not have tried out, because transportation may have been an issue, to start day one. So we are certainly more than happy to answer any questions, and again, we do have Dr. Hester and Mr. Blake here, in case you have anything that is specific for the schools.
Mr. Blaine.
May I, before questions, Ms. Grant, I'd like to supplement a little bit of what has been shared, and I don't know that it'll answer questions, but I want to make sure that I provide some additional context. I first want to thank both Mr. Wolf and Mr. Forrest for helping to spearhead with me this effort, along with Mr. Uppercow, who's not here. The professionalism that they have shown, as well as our principals, Dr. Hester and Mr. Blake, has been tremendous, because I think the desire is there, but trying to work out the logistics is not an easy task. The other thing that I want to make sure is, as crystal clear as possible, while I think we all appreciate and have tremendous respect for the activity bus heritage, you know, or the history, and what that means to folks, we're not blind to that. But I will ask, as you're conceptualizing this and you're scrutinizing it, that you view it as a new pilot, not as a restoration, as much as this is a new program. And the pilot aspect of it, I intend to support our staff in obtaining feedback throughout the year, including each month, just to see how things are proceeding to troubleshoot as we go. But the goal is that it begins here in the rural part of our county, but we'd like, over time, to be able to expand it. At least from the perspective of equity, we'd like all of our students to have greater access to the human resources and the other resources that we have for them at the school beyond the school hours, and we don't want individual circumstances to impede that. We really want all of our students who need that access to have it. But I'm not sure, and I will double-check this before other questions, I may have misunderstood, Mr. Wolf, but I want to make sure. I thought that there was a combined busing in the past with middle and high school students.
There was. I misspoke.
So the change to that is not that they are on the same bus, they were on the same bus previously, but if you are comparing the new pilot to the previous activity buses, the addition of the aid was something that was more of the intentional decision to try to support the supervision on those buses, as well as the hub stops.
That is correct.
So, wanted to make sure of that, and I'll allow the board to ask questions now. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine.
I'd like to commend you on making these arrangements. I think it's really needed, and it's a terrific program. However, there's one area, and you already addressed it, and that is the case where the kid is uncomfortable waiting, is his mother or father going to come or not. And that leaves us in a very critical position. If we leave, and 20 kids get off, and one kid is still there, and his parents never did come, we're in trouble right off the bat. And I'm not sure what the solution is, unless maybe we can get each rider to have an agreement with neighbors that somebody is going to be there under every single condition. Or if a parent misses for the, you know, they promised to come, and they fail to get there, they're 10 minutes late, and everybody's gone, we don't know what's going to happen, and we can't afford to have that happen, I think. And maybe we have to say, if you miss, and we don't know it, your kid's not going to be able to ride in the future, or some, I don't know what the solution is, but that really concerns me.
We have, actually, in some of the writing that we have, in a letter that we're working with the principals, is that we give a student two times that that takes place. If they don't have a ride there, but if they have to be brought back to the school, then the activity bus would not be an option for them until the parent has come in and had the conversation with the administrators in regards to what's going on. So we give them two opportunities, because we do worry about that as well at the same time.
But if the problem comes up at the first time, and the kid runs into trouble because somebody's been hiding behind a tree someplace, I mean, we're going to be in the hot seat, for sure, and it's a challenge.
Mr. Wolf, I think maybe that needs to be, I think what you're saying, and clarifying, Mr. Blaine, I think what Mr. Wolf is saying is that students aren't going to be left if there's not someone to match them with. In other words, they're not going to be left there unless there is a ride that they've secured. So they're not there to wait without a ride. So they would be immediately taken back to the school, rather than left at the hub stop unsupervised.
Okay. My concern remains, as I read what was here, there's a faint possibility that we miss, and that was my concern. If we've addressed it, I'm happy.
Sure. And I think, as Dr. Baker had stated, is that we want to make sure that our students, number one, are picked up, and, two, being comfortable with the individuals picking them up. And again, the bus is not just a drop-and-go, it's a matter of drop, let's make sure our students have been picked up, and then head on to the next stop. So although maybe not immediately taken, well, if it happens at the first stop, they'll probably ride until the final stop and then come back to the school. So, and then the administration would work with the parents in regards to that. Yeah, sure.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I love the work that you've done with this. Couple of questions. First of all, parental permission, before a student can actually ride the bus, is there, or the first day of school, will the parent have to have already signed a permission form that says that they understand the rules, that they will be at such and such a stop, and do they know what stop their child will be left at, so that they will be there? How are we going about getting, I know I saw the email and all the communications, but I want to know about permission from the parents.
So that was a discussion that we had, that there would be an agreement between the parents and the school, that they would acknowledge that they have that responsibility to be at the site to receive their student. Additionally, as far as, and we didn't mention that with the information that would go out, but on the transportation website, parents can log into that, put their address in, and it will identify the closest hub stop to their home address. But yes, the intent is that the parent would have to acknowledge in a written form that they understand the practice of the activity run, and the expectation is that they would be there to receive their child.
Okay. So a student, would a student be able to ride the activity bus? He could just say, oh, well, Mom told me to ride the activity bus if there's not been a signed information, signed permission slip from the parent or guardian?
Not without it being processed through the office.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Now, the second question was, okay, actually, you answer that with your, when you log in and you put your address. So, thank you very much.
Sure.
Ms. Palmer.
Thank you very much. Will the rule that students must get off at their closest stop be in play here, or will parents, for example, if it's better for them to meet them at a different hub spot because that's closer to their work and they can guarantee being there? Or if somebody arrives at the first hub stop, Mom and Dad aren't there, they're back on the bus, but as you said, they're going to three more stops, can a parent meet the bus later in the route and retrieve their child?
Yes, they could do that. And again, that would be an agreement between the parent and the school. They would identify the site that they wanted the student to be taken to, and they would agree to meet the student at that point.
So as long as that's in place ahead of time?
Yes.
In the example where I gave, where they missed them at the first stop, they shouldn't be following the bus to the next stops, they should go to the home school?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brazwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you, gentlemen, for your work in this effort, and I agree with Dr. Baker, it's not a restoration, it's a different way of doing business, and I think it's a great idea. I just wanted to find out from you, when you selected these stops, and notice that one of them, the stops was Spotsylvania Middle School, but Spotsylvania Middle School's not participating, why did we use Spotsylvania Middle School? Or how did we, what was the methodology for selecting the stops besides just convenience for the bus? Was there population or housing subdivisions in play there, or was it just clearly out of convenience for a bus?
When we were trying to designate the stops, again, as I mentioned earlier, we looked at the attendance zone, and of course, Spotsia Middle School being within the Spotsylvania High School, Post Oak Zone. We were trying to find properties, public properties or commercial properties, that were large enough that could accommodate the parking and provided adequate lighting, and a safe zone, so to speak, for the stop to take place. You know, we were trying to service- You know, we were trying to service that end of the zone. And you're coming down Courthouse Road from the Courthouse. Those were just logical points in my mind as designated stops, being Spotsy Middle School, John J. Wright being facilities that are within our school system, obviously, and then proceeding down to Berkeley, and then the fire station, old fire station number three.
Yeah, I understand that. And I guess if I were a Spotsylvania Middle student, say, well, the bus is stopping here. Why, you know, I just happen to go to another school, you know? What's, or I happen to be at Spotsylvania Middle School, so why can't I catch the bus going somewhere? You know what I mean? I didn't understand why we picked Spotsylvania Middle School if we're not including them in the pilot. I guess that's what I'm really asking.
Yes, sir.
I hope I didn't get everything discombobulated.
No, I think that's a good question. I don't know that I'm going to provide an adequate response, but I will certainly try. Is that the activities for middle school typically finish up at 5:30, at least by 5:30. So these buses aren't running until 5:30. So this would be after the activity that's taking place. And Spotsylvania Middle School on that stop, although the first stop is moving on unless someone wants to, you know, they're not part of the pilot at this point with Post Oak and Spotsylvania High School. We will be having meetings throughout the year on a monthly basis to look at the ridership of our students. So it may determine at some other point that, you know, we add additional buses. But for this pilot discussion, it is only for Post Oak and Spotsylvania High School.
Okay. And I want to, I appreciate that, the fact that we're going to continue to see the trends and ridership and things like that. So if we have to make adjustments, we can. Because I understand we don't have everything hard and fast, and we need to make some adjustments. But I want to finish by saying that I'm really excited about the program. I honestly believe that Post Oak and Spotsylvania Middle, I mean, Spotsylvania High School are going to be greatly served by these Activity Buses. I've had the distinct pleasure, if you will, of riding to parts of the county where they're not very close to the schools. And if I, if my children lived out there and there wasn't adequate transportation to bring them home from school activities, and I say activities because a lot of people think of it only in athletics. But if my son needs to spend a little time with his teacher, working on algebra or some other core subject, and the choice is a ride home or spending time with their teacher without an Activity Bus, I know my son's going to come home, you know? So I think this is a great thing for not only the students, but it's also a great thing for teachers. I used to coach middle school football. And one of my fellow coaches had to leave the coaching profession, if you will, because when we removed Activity Buses, he had to stay and wait at the school until every child was picked up, which precluded him from having the opportunity of spending time with his own children at their sporting events. And so I see this as a big morale booster, not only for our teachers and support staff, but also a great benefit for our students. So thank you for the work that you've done.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, thanks for really thinking outside the box. And as Dr. Baker said, this is a pilot. When you're looking at the three different routes or drop-off points, are you being specific? Because I can think of like Spotsy Middle. Are we looking at which, the front of the building or the side of the building? The same thing as you get John J. Wright? Are we going to be specific so that the parents know exactly this is where they're going to be meeting the bus?
We will be, yes, sir. And my intent was that the buses would pull into the bus lot at those schools.
Very good. The other question I had was, do we have the ability to be able to track these buses? So that, I'm thinking of the question like Mrs. Palmer said, you know, if a parent, the student can't get off at the first one, but the parent could call you, call up and say, and you could tell them, yeah, the bus has already passed point number one. It should be at point number two in five minutes, or point number three. And so tracking, you'd be able to tell that person exactly where to be for the pickup?
Yes, they will be staffing at both Post Oak Middle School and at Spotsylvania High School. They will have radio communications with the buses. And we will also have transportation staff at our facility until the Activity Buses are off the road.
Fantastic. And again, thanks for all the work that you've done on this. I think, as been emphasized, this is a pilot. And I think we will iron out any trouble spots in the ability to, if we need to add additional, to create another drop zone. You know, I think as we go down the road, we'll see if that's really going to be necessary. Thank you for putting all the effort into this. I truly do appreciate it.
Ms. Shelley.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. The drop-off points, I mean, we've, some of our schools are on the drop-off points, so it's easy to make the staff know. But what about, say, like at Lake Anna and the other drop-off points? Have we talked to the management of those organizations? Or I noticed one of the church, and do they, are they aware that this is going to be happening?
Yes, ma'am. I have visited each site and talked to appropriate personnel and have authorization.
I'm really shocked with all those questions to sit and get asked. But how, I assume it's with a note, just like in every other day. But a parent will probably be required to send a note with their teacher that morning, or with their child that morning if their child's going to be picked up by a neighbor's parent?
Yes, they would need to.
If they're going to carpool home. Got it.
Right, they would. But one of the things that we're also looking at for the students who will be sort of consistent riders are lists. Like, for example, it's easy to go to this one for football. If there's a football player who's going to be riding the bus on a daily basis, instead of writing slips every time when someone's getting on the bus, there's just a list that would have that information that the bus driver would have. So anything that we can remain consistent with, the better. Yeah.
Ms. Palmer.
One more quick question. Carpools, will you allow people to establish a carpool and register the fact that Billy, Johnny, and Freddie are all going in Billy's mom's car?
We would prefer that they ride with their parents. But if they have worked out with the school administration and all the parents have signed off that that is something that the students that you have mentioned can do that, I'm sure that the school would work out with them. Yeah.
If I can also just elaborate, as we have Mr. Belaico and Dr. Hester here, and they've greeted this opportunity with great enthusiasm, and we have great confidence in them. But I do think that part of the pilot to Ms. Palmer's question is there certainly could be the potential of those types of things being worked out. But the critical part is going to be that every parent is going to have to provide the documentation for their child, and it's going to have to be verified. So it won't, I would think it's going to have to be very, have to be very thorough and cautious early on until there's that momentum and kind of security in doing that. So I know that they will help work that out. But I also don't want at the front end to commit them to too many logistical arrangements until they've had a chance to feel confident with it. But I do know that they are, I have great confidence in them to support the kids and the families.
Are there any other questions for these fine gentlemen? Well, I thank you very much for this program. I've been supporting it and its creation for lots of years. So my district will be very grateful.
Well, on behalf of Dr. Hester, Mr. Belaico, Mr. Forrest, and Mr. Uppercow, who is not here this evening, and myself, we appreciate the support of the board as we explore this pilot and hope to bring back some information to you as we, from our monthly meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to action items. We'll start at 14.01, second reading approval of revisions to school board policies. FY '17 cyclical policy review. Can we have a motion to approve the second reading?
So moved, Madam Chair. First reading, second reading and block.
I will second that.
All right. Motion to approve the second reading and block made by Dr. Meyer. Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I did not hear the unblock statement. I want to exclude BCA.
Okay.
Right, okay. I, I'm sorry, Joe. I understood you to mean you were wanting us to vote on all three at one time. Okay, that's fine. I'll blame my hearing aid.
Got you covered, Bill.
Okay, any discussion? Well, perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Move on to 14.02, second reading and approval of VSBA February 2017 policy updates. Do we have a motion to approve those updates?
I will make a motion to approve the second reading of VSBA updates.
Motion to approve the second reading of the VSBA updates by Ms. Shelley. Second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. On to 14.03, the second reading approval of revisions to school board policies. BCA, school board organizational meetings, and BCB, school board officers. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
A motion to approve from Dr. Meyer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Braswell. Now we're open for discussion. Mr. Blaine.
I do have some concerns about this. I recognize what the policy had been long ago and how the restrictions that are currently there arrived. But I'm very uncomfortable in setting boundaries for future boards. And I can envision a situation where you have a board that's comprised of many very active and busy individuals, and there are one or two people say, I, under no conditions, could be responsible for being the chairman of this organization. And we may be unintentionally hamstringing people in the future. And I think that frankly, we should go back to what the original statement was, that in January, the board elects a president for one year, period. And then, let me finish. And the following year, or following election, if they want to nominate that same person, they can. If they don't want to, they don't have to. There's no force on them. But to restrict them from what they, people might perceive as a necessity is not called for. And I don't think we frankly want to hamstring people. So I would not like to see us proceed.
Mr. Braswell.
Mr. Blaine, I think from reading the organizational, from reading BCA, it says specifically what you're referring to, that the person would serve a one-year term. However, at the end of that term, that person could be nominated again. Our current way of doing business is that after a person has served a one-year term, they're not eligible to be considered for reelection. And I think that if the person has done a good job and the board considers them worthy to run another term, as we said, no more than two terms consecutively, then that would give a person that had, that was just getting their feet wet in the first year, an opportunity to really run with it in the second year. And then I wanted to follow up by saying that the vice chair should be similar to the chair. The vice chair just currently says, we'll elect the vice chairman of the board for one year. And it does not give them the opportunity to be reelected. And I believe that that person should also have the opportunity to serve two consecutive terms, especially if the chairman and the vice chairman have good chemistry and they wish to continue to work together, then we should be able to consider that.
Essentially, we're in agreement. What I'm seeing is I think we need to go back to the rule prior to, in the information you have in front of you, there's a, the limit of one year and not be consecutive is being eliminated in this motion to begin with, which is correct. Secondly, I'm saying, let's eliminate the rest of that as well. Because we will end up with a rule that says, when you have an election, you elect a person for one year, period. At the end of that year, that person could be nominated or not nominated or whatever. There are no restrictions. If you wanted, if you had, if you liked the person after one year and you like them more after two years, you might want to have that person for a third year. And that we should, that board at that time, I think, should have the option.
Can I respond to that?
Mr. Braswell.
I think the intent was that, you know, you still offer, you give others the opportunity to assume leadership. And having a term limit of two years would prevent a monopoly of the board in terms of power. And so I thought the restriction of one year went too far in the opposite direction. But a person should at least have an opportunity to, for one reelection or one additional term, just like we do with, you know, with president, you know? You have one term, and if you're, you prove yourself worthy and your board members want you to run another term, you get a second term. And then you should sit out a term, at least, before being reconsidered again. So I, that's how I kind of feel about it. And most of our election cycles, you know, the board is changing every two years anyway. Or, you know, it's up for election every two years. So I think it should be in line with that as well.
Ms. Shelley, and then Dr. Meyer.
I see what you're saying, Mr. Blaine, and I do understand what you're saying. It could maybe tie a board down in the future. If there was no one else that wanted to take the chairmanship role, to take that leadership role. But the policies are, can be changed. So if there is a board in the future that there is somebody that is the board chair and nobody else wants it after that person has been, if someone has been a chairman for two years, then the board could come back together very easily and change the policy and not have that anymore. That could be, I agree with what Mr. Braswell said. It's just to give other people a chance. And this is, I mean, when we had it as one year and just they couldn't no longer serve the consecutive, I think this saying, adding the two-year consecutive is just putting a limit just because there would be other people and no one, I guess he said a monopoly. I don't know another word to use. But I agree with Mr. Braswell with what he said. Because I think that any, I think any board that needed to could change the policy if necessary.
The proposed change is an improvement. There's no question. I'm saying it's too restrictive. That's my point.
Dr. Meyer.
You know, policies always reflect the temper of the board at the time. And when this policy was created, it was in response to a different situation. And things have evolved, and thankfully, I think, has evolved to the betterment of the board. And, you know, I motioned for the, to approve this for the reason that the board could have a chairman one year and not have the same chair the following year. Because the language is, may be nominated or elected. It's an option. It's an option. It's optional. Whereas the other way was in response to prior situations where it was obligatory, that person could only serve once and once it, and then it had to move on. And there were reasons for that at the time. But I think we're beyond those reasons. I think we have the option to be able to fulfill what you're saying, and I don't view it as being restrictive. I view it as being more open. So instead of being restricted just once and out, the option is there with the concurrence of the fellow board members, that the person could serve a second term. And there's nothing that prohibits even the vice chair from fulfilling a second term. There's no restriction there either. So I don't really view it as being restrictive. I view it as being a little more open. Again, it's not going to the extent that we were before, where a person was serving for four years in a row. This is, you know, is opening the door a little bit. I think it's being more responsive, and, and as the board has evolved, and the board will continue to evolve as we have new members come on the board. So I just take a slightly different view of the way you are perceiving it. I perceive it as being a little more open, not restrictive. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell.
Dr. Meyer, I just want to bring your attention to the second paragraph, and I want to read it for everyone's hearing. It says, "The school board also shall appoint a clerk and approve a designee of the division superintendent to attend meetings of the school board in the absence or inability of the superintendent to attend. The school board will elect a vice chairman of the board and appoint a deputy clerk. The term of the office for the above positions shall be one year." And what I'm saying is, is that we should separate the vice chairman from that, so that that person's term of office should be congruent with the, the chairman's.
But the term's not changing, we're just giving it a real, an option to serve a second term.
That's right.
The term is still a year.
Right.
You just want to add the vice chair to the same option that the chair has.
For reelection. That's right.
To be reappointed, re-whatever. We, we, we don't elect a chair, do we? I mean, I just didn't know that word. Is that the word we use?
We do elect.
Okay, elect. Okay. Got it.
I would, you know, I would concur with what Mr. Braswell is saying. I'm thinking, if the board concurs with the first paragraph, you know, we act on it tonight, and then we ask, you know, Dr. Martin to come back with that same thought for paragraph number two at a follow-up meeting.
So, Mr. Blaine, are you comfortable, I mean, you've gotten your point across?
I wanted to get the options out on the table, which I think are better, but the, you know, the current plan is an improvement already.
Correct. Discussion concluded? Okay. All those in favor of the second reading approval of revisions to school board policies, BCA?
Aye.
I'll, I vote aye as well.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. On to 15.01, any unfinished business? Seeing no unfinished business, 15.02, any new business? Dr. Meyer.
Following up on just what Mr. Braswell's point is, that I think then, if, given what we've just approved on paragraph one of BCA, if we could ask, you know, Dr. Martin to look at that paragraph number two and bring to us the language concurrent or consistent with what we have in paragraph one at upcoming meeting for first and second reading. That's point number one. Point number two is, as we're approaching, already looking at budget, but, and we're going through a lot of resignations, retirements, that ask staff to, as they work on budget items, to bring to us a report on how we're doing and look at the trend of the resignations, retirements, you know, situations, so we can see how that data is unfolding and how we are doing as we try to address the question of attrition or loss of, of our employees to other school divisions. And with that, I yield. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have an announcement, and I also have a, an issue I'd like to bring up. On the 23rd of September, at Cortland High School, will be the 12th Annual Baron P. Braswell II Race Against Teen Violence. We're always very excited with the school division's support in this endeavor to bring in, raise an awareness of teen violence in our community, and, and we're always very grateful and thankful of the participation that all the schools, you know, do to support it. And we are going to have, again, this year, the Friendly School Challenge, high school, middle school, and elementary school challenge, with first place being $1,000 for that school, second place $500, and third place $250. Over the past several years, there's been certain schools that have been dominating, and, you know, they need to get knocked off their throne. And so we're going to, you know, encourage you to, you know, push for the, push, push them off the throne, and, and help us have another successful year of bringing awareness to this worthy undertaking, and, and also give us an opportunity to help students that have a desire to further their education receive a scholarship. And so we're really excited about the support that we get from the school division. I want to thank Dr. Baker, his staff. I especially want to thank Cortland High School. They always have our backs, and I just want to just bring to your attention, the 23rd of September, please sign up for the race. I will be running. I will be looking pretty ragged and rough, but cheer me on anyway. But the 23rd of September. And then, I was really excited about the, the, the following events. We've had the spelling bee, and I've really admired the spelling bee because it, you know, the talent that it takes for young people to study and prepare for that is phenomenal, and it really not only uses memorization skills, but great analytical skill as well in order to be, to be a speller of that, that sort. And then we, last year, the division sponsored the first annual chess tournament, and I'd, you know, really love to see how we continue to promote the chess tournament, because it does encourage analytical thinking from our, our children. But the issue that I wanted to bring up, and I was thinking about it the other day, is, you know, in our career in Tech Center, we have a wonderful culinary division, and I would like to see if there somehow, as it would be possible, to promote an Iron Chef competition. I'd love to be one of the evaluators. Yeah, and, and I don't know the, how we would actually execute the concept based off of the facilities that we have, but I think it would bring great credit to our career in Tech Center, and I think it would be an excellent opportunity for our young people to show off their great skill in the culinary arts, and, and the other things that we do in, in the career in Tech Center. And so I just bring that to the attention of my fellow board members, if, hear their opinions about that idea, and, and then see from staff if that's something that's even feasible to do.
Mr. Blaine.
I think I'm going to pass on that, that I told you. We'll do this next time.
Ms. Palmer.
Thank you so much. I'd like to append a request to Dr. Meyer's about resignations and retirements and such, and just ask that staff include an overview of the exit interview process for us, and if possible, some data on how many people participate in that exit view, exit interview, because those are generally optional. So it'd be good to know that. And the other thing I wanted to do was to complement the transportation and communication staff. I don't know how many people went to National Night Out, but Rover was there, and I'm just thoroughly impressed with where I'm seeing Rover pop up, and the fact that staff are coming out to evening events, and it's a huge presence. It's, I was at a different booth, and I looked across, and I knew immediately where Spotsylvania County Schools was, and so I really appreciate that effort and how that's coming together. So thank you.
And if I may, first, Mr. Braswell, we will certainly look into the Iron Chef. I know that Sodexo has helped to sponsor the Future Chefs Competition, which has been a, a real hit for our students and showed that talent, but you're right, we have folks that are cultivating their culinary skills at a higher level, at the high school level, and so I think it's certainly something we can talk with both Chef DiMatio and other folks to see if we can find ways to provide more opportunities for that type of competition. I also wanted to let Ms. Palmer and the board know, because you brought it up. So I was looking at Renee Daniels, our Director of Communication. We have determined that at our first school board meeting of the new school year on September the 11th, prior to the board meeting at 5:00, Rover will be here to greet families, and we will promote that. So that will be another opportunity, but thank you for acknowledging that, and I just wanted to let the board know that was amazing timing, considering that was something we decided this morning. So, thank you.
Dr. Meyer.
One afterthought. You had mentioned about the school board budget advisory committee meeting, having its first meeting on August 28th. Can you then provide an update for the full board as a follow-up report at a future meeting?
Yes.
Or work session? Thank you.
Any more new business? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Braswell, second by Ms. Palmer. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.